You're listening to the Good News Podcast with Jamie Holton, brought to you by NBUC.
Hi, everyone. Welcome to the Good News Podcast with Jamie Holton. We are so excited for today's episode and so glad that you've chosen to join us. We have City Councilor Charmaine Williams on with us and Charmaine is going to talk a bit about her family and how they've experienced COVID, also around how she stays healthy in the midst of this pandemic. Such important stuff for us. And of course, as we move into February, we want to talk about Black History Month, what's happening within our city, and how we can change some of the systems and the structures that lead to racial injustice. Charmaine is an expert in this area and has so much to offer us. Again, really glad you're with us today. Let's dive in. Hey, everybody. Welcome to the Good News Podcast and so excited to have Charmaine Williams back with us. Charmaine planted a seed at the end of our last podcast when she joined us in December, maybe as we headed into Black History Month, to think about the conversation around that, but also around racial justice. And that's a big one. We're going to get into that in just a moment, but let me just start by welcoming you, Charmaine. Thank you so much for joining us again. How are you doing in the midst of this pandemic and all that's going on?
I am feeling hopeful and feeling thankful and hopeful that we are going to get through this. And we are going to come out of this with a new sense of appreciation for life and for our family. And I'm thankful that, you know, I'm able to be home and with my children during this time and keeping a sense of balance and groundedness for them.
Yeah, yeah. What's it? Can I ask, what's it like in your home? Because I know, you know, in many of our homes, it's a little busier with everybody being there. And certainly there are pluses as far as it really is cool to be together, but it can also be kind of challenging sometimes with everybody being in the house. So how, yeah, the challenges and the joys from your house?
Yeah, well, the challenge is, you know, I'm, we have five kids, my husband and I, and so there are seven of us in the house. And seven of us means there are three major meals being made a day with seven dishes in every one of those meals. It means there's constant things to be cleaned up. There's constant things to be picked up. I'm noticing more of how, you know, maybe we need to change the structure of this house to make things flow better. You know, because when you're in the space more often, you start realizing, oh, some things work and some things don't. It's been busy, you know, my kids are homeschooled, so everybody is home using the Wi-Fi. So if I do get glitchy, there are five devices running right now. And it can get pretty noisy at times. So those are the challenges. But the positives are the fact that we're here together. I'm actually able to be a part of my kids' homework, which is new, you know. You know, oftentimes our kids are going to school and doing homework or they don't. Or the assignments that they do are all in class. And now when there's assignments and projects, I get to walk through it with them. I had to Google search Long Division again, guys. You know what I mean? And I'm thankful that they still do it the same way as they did when I was in elementary school. You know, but it's been good. It's been, it's been a good time. And so from that perspective of being home, it's been, it's been nice.
Yeah. What are some of the challenges with having seven people in the house for you guys at the same time?
Oh, man, seven, like seven of us, there's, it's a lot because there's always dish, always dishes. Like the dishwasher runs twice in a day. And I have to say, please support your local restaurants. My family, we do because there's some times where I'm like, I've just done full breakfast. I've just done a full lunch. I'm not doing a full dinner. We are ordering food and, you know, just finding creative ways to not be overwhelmed by the amount of bodies and the chaos and the running. Because at some points in the day, it will just get really noisy because my kids will start running around the house and chasing each other. And so if that happens during this podcast, I apologize. Unleash sometimes.
Absolutely, absolutely. Totally, totally get the kitchen thing and the dishes. And we find the same thing in our house. It's endless. And then, and don't even get me started on grocery bills. Our grocery bill skyrocketed through this, but, but I echo with you. I mean, the positive piece is it is so good to be together and have that family time. And we recognize for some people watching or listening to this today, you may be able to absolutely resonate with that. You may be on your own and your challenges may be quite different. And we just recognize everyone's challenges are different through this time. But hopefully that you know, we're all in it together and that's our greatest desire. Absolutely. One more question just around the pandemic before we get more into the Black History Month and what's happening there. And the very important conversation around racial justice and reconciliation. Just on a personal, if I could ask you, Charmaine, it is so important to stay healthy these days and it can be really challenging. So just as you're talking about having all the people, all the family around and the business of the house, how are you taking care of yourself or how are you staying healthy these days? Yeah, just a word on that because I think that might be helpful for people to hear today as well.
You know, and thank you for that question because there was a point where, you know, it's easy to get very overwhelmed by the circumstance that you're in. And, you know, when you don't have the usual mechanisms that you would use to help cope with stress, like, you know, going out and meeting with friends, going to church and socializing. They say the best way to combat mental illness is being social and getting out. When that's been stripped or been shifted, changed, you're not getting that personal contact. And I'm a social being, and so I definitely found it challenging to have to be in my space all the time. But knowing that this is a pandemic and knowing that, you know, if you do get COVID-19, it really tackles your lungs and your respiratory system. And I've been making sure that I'm taking a lot of vitamin C and a lot of vitamin D, especially vitamin D, the sunshine vitamin, just to stay up on that. And, and this year, my husband and I, we invested, and it's an investment, but we invested in a treadmill. And we did that because I'm, you know, we need to get moving. I'm sure everybody's experienced the COVID-15. I have not been an exception to that little rule, you know what I mean? So we invested in a treadmill and even my 16-year-old son, he brought the weights in the house. And, you know, we're all just trying different ways to get active because getting outside to go for a run and go for a walk, it's not always the easiest thing for us to do. So we had to really take our health seriously and that's what I've been doing. I've been just walking and reading, even if it's a stroll on my treadmill, just to get moving.
Yeah, good for you. Good for you, you know, and so important. And I love the word you used, investment, like I think it is an investment. I guess as people are watching and listening to this, we would just want you to know that you are worthy of investing in and your health really does matter. And if you're feeling maybe off or blah or whatever, just to know that that's normal right now. Because this is a very normal time and all of us, I think, are experiencing that. I know I felt that just a few days ago in a way that just sometimes it catches up to you and things like every day feels the same. And it could be hard sometimes, right? And so I'd read something back a couple years ago after a friend had shared with me about just maybe just need to switch things up sometimes, like even go for a walk or run a different direction than you normally do. And so I did it and it was so minute, but it really did change, transform my spirit, actually, in some ways. And it felt like a different day just doing that. So be creative, have fun, but just know it's normal to be feeling a little off. And because this is the time we're in and take care of yourself. You guys, you're all worthy of taking care, taking care of that, that's for sure. So thanks.
That's what God wants us to do. Take care of this temple, right?
Yeah, exactly.
You are his temple. Take care of yourself. I put on makeup for this.
Well, you always look good. You always look good. And I got to tell you, I just loved your smile, your vibrancy, the life that you're just so full of life, Charmaine. And really, really appreciate you and your leadership in our city. When we were together last year in December, we were really just celebrating the fact that you were our first black woman, female counselor. And I just don't want to miss that again. And, and we're so proud of you and grateful for you that God led you to run for office and the role, the very unique role, and time that you're playing this role in right now. And so as we, you know, think about Black History Month, we can't think about Black History Month without thinking about all that happened last year. And just, just from counsel's perspective, from your perspective, what are some of the things happening over the, over the month around Black History, celebrating our history? But also, how is it different this year because of the very important conversation that needs to continue from last year around racial justice and equality and just trying to work on some of those things together?
You know, I first have to say thank you for starting the conversation. I think, you know, we have to, it's a very heady change that needs to be made. You have to acknowledge that we are in the time we are in, in 2021, and we've come far. But the events that took place last year, all the way up to January 6th, it's a very clear reminder that we have a good way to go. And we can't think that because what we saw happened in the US, it's not happening here. We can't think that. We had people who were, who on January 6th, driving in front of the US consulate. And there were Canadian flags on Capitol Hill that were flown. And just if you go online, you can see them. So we do have a good journey to continue to walk down, to dismantle anti-black racism, dismantle the beliefs and the legacies that have encouraged, you know, cognitive dissonance in all of us to think that, you know, people, if you're not, we're not human, you know what I mean? That inherent belief that has carried on for generations. So, you know, I think this year for Black History Month, it is so important for us to celebrate what the changes that we've made and know that we are going in a direction that, you know, like think about Kamala Harris, Vice President Kamala Harris, the first black woman, first Indian woman to be Vice President of America.
Yeah.
It's awesome.
Yeah, it really is.
And, and so, yeah, yeah, like this is amazing that, you know, the fact that we, we are living in a world where are some people are having kids born this year and all they're going to know is a woman, black woman as Vice President. And the same experience for, for some of our kids, many kids, all they know, or not all they know, but they know that America had a black president with Barack Obama, right? So, and the same thing, I think that is, I know I'm not a president, you know, and you're a vice president. But that is the same reality that, that people made the choice to see for, in electing me as a counselor for Brampton, the first black woman. So, you know, we've, we've come far, we've got a long way to go. But this year, we need to start realizing and celebrating that we are capable of making more changes because we've made changes.
Yeah, yeah. And just to know the impact that those have, like you say, you just have named some history-making facts, realities that will change the rest of history. And as we, in our own ways, in our own organizations, raise up leaders of, of different genders and different races, we also will be living into that like 100%. You, you mentioned the term cognitive dissonance.
Yes.
Charmaine, could you just maybe drill down into that, what that means a little bit and just to explain, explain the impact of that?
Yeah, you know, cognitive dissonance really is over generations. When you look at, you know, question, people ask, well, how could somebody treat a black person this way? You know, cognitive dissonance is, is the blinders that we put on to make how we treat people acceptable. Because you've been taught, and if we look at, at the generations of generations of history, slavery was 400 years of people seeing black skin as inhuman. They, there were animals, you know? And that belief made people think it's acceptable to physically abuse, to maim, to, you know, just do horrible things to another person. And, you know, and so to think that it's just, it's had damaging effects, not just on that black, but also on white people who believe that because it's not normal to, to be in the presence of a black body hanging from a tree and saying, this is a great Sunday afternoon, you know? So I think about the mental torment that white people at that time have gone through and, and what that has caused over the years. So that is cognitive dissonance. We have to dismantle what it has done to us and acknowledge that those experiences, those legacies, those images, they're not okay. Because, you know, and I think we're, we're getting to some really great changes in history. And because you're seeing a big pushback, there are generations who are born, raised, knowing that people of all different colors and races is our human beings, they're, they're loved in God's creation as well, right? So we're not, we're dismantling it every time we have a new generation being born and being taught to see each other as human.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I think one of the things that got lifted up last year with the awakening, the awareness of how relevant this issue is, not just like you said, in the US, but, but, but here in our own neighborhoods as well, is that we all can look deep within to see where our prejudices and our biases are. Because, yeah, we may not be, you know, it's so easy to say, oh, well, I'm not like that. I don't believe that. But, but we all have our own. And unless we stop and really think and pray about these things, we'll miss those. And I think that that awakening, that awareness was a gift to us last year. But now is the hard work of actually, what are those biases? What are those prejudices that we all have? What are those things? Like I've just been blown away by things that I didn't realize. I'm, I'm ashamed in some ways of not having realized people were being treated so poorly. Like friends of mine, like you, Charmaine, who are black and the experiences that you've had, Ryan Aguard from the Brampton Fire Department, he'll be on our podcast next week. But just to hear his story and so many stories like that from my really good friends who are black and not, I just hadn't, I didn't realize that it was so relevant and so close and so real, you know? And so I'm, I'm, I hate it. I just, I'm so, it makes me sad. And I'm only a smidgen of what you might experience, who's experienced it. Like I really want to name that, that white privilege piece as well and just the reality of that. But the awareness of that and grateful for that. And then now we, how do we move forward? How do we, how do we move forward together that this is an issue, not just for some, but for all of us? Like that's been, right? And that's, I think, what we want to keep working at and talking about, you know?
Absolutely. And that conversation is necessary, you know? It's necessary to have the conversation because, you know, you don't, nobody wants to, to be labeled a racist, right? Nobody wants to be labeled sexist. Nobody wants to have that label. But if you, you can't avoid the, you can't be so afraid of being labeled that, right? To the point where you're just going to shut down and not have the conversation. Because there's a difference between intention and, you know, and, and it's like, they're not a difference.
Yeah.
Impact. And yeah, there's a difference between intention and impact. Exactly. And, you know, so when, when you realize that some of the ways you've been treating another person, even though you're not intending to be hurtful, to be racist or to be oppressive, you know, the impact is still there. So when somebody's saying, I've been impacted in this way, there's a lot of change that happens when you say, wow, I didn't realize that that was happening to you, you know? And, and I don't, I want more of a commitment to say, okay, I'm acknowledging that I've hurt you in this way. What am I going to do to change it? I'm going to now hold myself accountable. And so, yeah, there's, there's, I was talking about this conversation and how it relates to faith. Because I know, you know, we are all children of God. And, and somebody said, well, you know, in the Bible, it says, "Love thy neighbor as I have loved you." Why isn't everybody doing that? And they said, well, sometimes the question is, how can I love thy neighbor if thy neighbor does not look like me? Right? And, and so we have to start thinking about, okay, that is a good question. Because it's so easy, you know, but let's face it, there's even racism in the church.
Oh, absolutely.
Right? There's, there's, there are beliefs and systems and feelings and thoughts that, that are in the church, the house of God. But, you know, we have to start asking ourselves that question. When thy neighbor does not look like me, you know, how can I love that person?
Yeah, yeah. And I think that's when it's just so, like, you don't even realize sometimes that those things are going on within you, you know? And that's, I think, that, that getting back to that cognitive dissonance, like just, we're just not even aware of those, those things. And I think as we're talking about it openly like this, I think just helps us point them out. And with humility and grace to have these conversations with each other. And then we learn and grow and hopefully we can, we can be, be just more aware of those things and make the changes once we're, once we're aware of them. You know, it's funny because you talk about loving people who are different from us. And that's certainly something Jesus did so well. Like there's so many stories in the Bible, right? Where he, he, you know, he interacted with a, with a woman from Samaria at the well, you know, the Good Samaritan story where it's just a story about the neighbor might be different from you. It's not just someone that looks like you. And yeah, totally such an important point. But without intention, it can be easy not to do that, you know? And that's the opportunity I think we have right now to be intentional about these things.
Right.
Yeah. Charmaine, as, as Brampton's first black female counselor, what is life like for you, if I could ask? In the sense of, my guess is, and I want to check this out with you, my guess is there's some people who are really, in fact, a lot of people who celebrate that and like, yeah, you know, and love to hear about that. But then I, my guess is there's probably some challenges within that. And not everybody, whether they realize it or not, whether they're intentional or not, I could suspect that there's, there's experiences where, you know what I mean? Where it's a challenge for you. And yeah, I'd love to hear about, about that, if that's okay.
You know, I, like I said, you know, before, the last time I was talking about, people will say, oh, Counselor Williams pulled the race card in a conversation. And, you know, almost trying to make me feel bad for even talking about how, how race impacts the conversations and the decisions that are being made. You know, it, I want, I want people to realize that, like I said, Brampton does have its issues. It does. And, you know, we've been, it's a city that has over 110, maybe 15 or more thousand black African Caribbean people. And though the numbers has been high since the 60s and the 70s, we've been here in this city. My family came here in 1980 and we were the minority, but we were here. And we had to face our own, you know, in-your-face racism. People are, you know, don't, we don't want you here. It's just, like I said, that, that belief that my voice doesn't really matter. And so how has that impacted me now? I think there, there's, over time, because how my black skin has been portrayed for generations, you know, there is this belief that I, people with my skin are not smart enough, not capable enough. You know, it, it's been hard to try to challenge those belief systems. So, you know, over time, if I'm, if I have an opinion or if I'm being outspoken, it's, it's not always as received as well as other people, you know? And even when I go to the door, if I'm knocking on the door and saying, hi, I'm Counselor Williams, you know, I get, you know, sometimes it's just a look or a wave of the hand, you know, get away from my house, you know? Or an automatic assumption that I'm here to cause some trouble. You know what I mean? So, yeah, yeah. When, because of the personality and who I am, you know, I do find that I can break down those barriers fairly quickly. But the fact that I have to go to that extra extent to break a barrier down, or I have, I feel like I have to go above and beyond what the average person might do in order to get something done, in order to be heard, or in order to make sure I sound articulate. And I'm speaking clearly because I have to get through all of those judgments that people put up first off when they meet me, you know? So there's a lot of work that goes into being a black woman on council. But the fact that I'm here is already challenging many people's beliefs, right? I even had one incident where we were at a flag raising event at City Hall. And I was standing and I was talking to somebody. And one lady came up to me and said, can you, can you take my, I want to take a picture of this person. Could you just take the picture for me? And I was like, sure, because that's who I am. No problem. I'll take it. And then somebody goes, oh, hi, Counselor Williams. So you mind if I take a pic? And, and the face of that poor woman was mortified. I didn't know you were a counselor. And in my head, I'm like, why did you assume I wasn't? But I, you know what I mean? But I'm like, you know, just, but, but this is the things, you know, being a black woman, I go through these things. I have to, you know, if I don't walk in with the title first off, or people saying, acknowledging that I'm counselor, I get overlooked, right? And, you know, little subtleties, you know, microaggressions that are said, you know, oh, well, how can we trust you? You're, you know, how can, how can you trust me? Why can't you trust me? I'm here. I'm speaking on behalf of the city, you know? And so there are little things that happen that definitely do make me and other people around me feel very uncomfortable. And, you know, I'm, I'm a very forgiving person though, and I understand what people go through, what we've gone through. And so I have also learned as a black woman to keep it moving and not dwell on those moments because I have to keep it moving. Because if I get stuck and get overly angry, then I'm really not getting the job done that I've been put here to do.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that's where I hope that we all can participate in this together. And when we, when any of us see something, not just a black woman, but a white man, you know what I mean? Like it might be addressed to me, but I can play a role in saying, hey, guys, can I just, that's the kind of thing that we're talking about. And I think sometimes when we have that opportunity, and we'd love to kind of get concrete. And what are some of those examples, words that maybe get used that could be phrased differently? Or those kind of situations that you talk about, just be great to talk about some of those so people can get an understanding. But I think when we all take responsibility to name those when they happen, I think that's one of the things that has shifted, at least for me this past year, that this is, this is a responsibility for all of us. In fact, as a, as a white person, perhaps I could help lead the way in that. Not just, not only, not only back up someone else who names it as a black person or a black experience, but actually be in the forefront of, of naming it. And, you know, and like you said, not in a heavy-handed kind of way or make justice, absolutely. With conviction, 100%, but, oh, hey, guys, this is the kind of thing we're talking about here. And here's another way that we could maybe look at this or say this or come into this a little bit differently. Like that kind of thing, just to get ourselves together. But, but, you know, what are some of those things? As you mentioned, those, those little things, those little biases. And I think you're right. Like that's, that's what we want to try to get down to because I think we don't realize they're there. And sometimes you don't realize that they matter and they do. They're there and they matter. What about even language? Like I, my, my guess is there's some, sometimes some teaching around language that would be helpful for some of us to hear, Charmaine, or just even any other experiences that come to mind. Okay, this is, this is what we're talking about. We can make some changes here. It'll, it'll, it'll help a lot.
Yeah, you know, and, and I call them microaggressions. And I think, you know, it's little certain things that are being said to, to almost diminish my presence and my existence. And, and when I say my, I'm talking more gen, like people who are black people, people of color. So, you know, it's, it's sometimes it's the reference to those people. You know, you might hear, you might hear somebody say, well, those people, they just, you know, and when you make a comment about those people, what are you referring to, you know? Oh, I went to the store and there are a bunch of kids and, you know, well, those people, they just don't like to listen when they're spoken to. What do you mean, those people, right? It's, if you can hear that tone, you know what I mean? Doesn't it feel kind of yucky?
Yeah, us versus them as opposed to we.
Yeah, you know, I, I, I've heard people describe, like I have a 16-year-old son and it scares me to death knowing that, you know, there are these automatic biases. If he goes out in a hoodie and a sweater and stuff, right? Why do I have to say, do you really want to wear that? You know what I mean? Are you sure you want to go out and look like that? Because when, if he does, I was at an event actually, and, and somebody was saying, you know, we've got a real problem with a whole bunch of thugs hanging around the lake there. They're thugs. And we're like, well, why do you think they're thugs? Well, they all have these hoodies on and, you know, anything. Well, they all have these hoodies on and, you know, everything. And I'm like, but I have a sixteen year old son. If my son wants to hang out with some of his friends, they're not doing anything. They're sitting there. Why are you assuming that they're thugs? Doesn't that feel kind of yucky?
Yeah.
Right? So it's automatically describing kids, especially black kids, as being thugs, problems. You know, a group of people, racialized people together, those people, they don't understand our way of doing things. That, you know, and, and making those kind of comments. Also, I often, and I love when people try and say, I don't see color. Like I, I know the intention is so coming from a place of warmth and kindness. But you know, when they, whenever they've added, done a study on understanding racialized group or understanding of people, or if there's a survey, they'll, whenever they have identify your, your race, almost every time that area is filled. So that really should go to show that people who are marginalized, people of color, they want people to acknowledge their blackness or their, you know what I mean? They want people to acknowledge that because that's how they identify. And so if you say you don't see color, that's almost like you're saying, I don't see you. And I don't see all of the things that come with you. I would rather say, I would rather people dismantle those beliefs that they have associated with my color. Right? And so I don't see all of the, the negative connotations that come with your blackness, but I do see that you're a black person.
Yeah. And the beauty in that.
And the beauty in that, because there is beauty in, in all of us.
Yeah.
Right? We all have, we're parents, most of, some of us are parents. We have, we, we love deeply, we, we, we feel pain the same way everybody else feels pain, you know? We share joy.
Yeah.
You know, and so those are a few things. I don't know if that drills down kind of what you're looking for.
Absolutely. No, though, and I think those are the kinds of things that we just need to, to talk more about and help people see them and change them, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah. What you just were talking about mentioned, reminded me of the human condition, you know, that we all are human beings, right?
Yes.
And, and I think that's a piece of, of, of a mindset that we want to encourage, you know, that we all are human beings.
Right.
And so we live in a city in Brampton that is as diverse as probably any on the planet. Like it really is amazing when you look at, at our city and how diverse we are.
That's right.
And, and just, just what are some strategies that, that you might be thinking about? Or that the city might be working on the council considering on bringing us together as far as these different communities, different faith groups, different people.
Right.
And, and I guess partly because my sense is we want to and need to move past toleration. It's one thing to tolerate each other, but I think we can do better, you know? We can do more than that. And, and, and what does that look like? And, and yeah, just, just what are some thoughts around, around that from, you know, as somebody who I know thinks about this, but also even from a more formal view, from what the council's kind of talking about. Yeah. Love to just hear a bit about that.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, so last year in January, we approved the diversity equity inclusion policy. And that came out of surveys and that were done at the city of Brampton to get an understanding of how identify and how they feel, working at the city of Brampton. And in the survey, it, it was very glaringly obvious that marginalized people, especially in the black community of the city of Brampton, do not feel like they're included. Opportunities don't come as easily. There's less promotions. And there's less, you know, feeling of being included in, in the, the fabric that is the, the corporation. It, it, it became very obvious that we needed to do something. So since we approved that policy in January, nothing much happened until George Floyd. When we all witnessed the murder of George Floyd, it shook us all to the core. It showed us that, how the extent of which people, black people in America are being treated and around the world. And, you know, thank goodness for the cell phone. Cause if we didn't have it, he would have been just another black man who didn't, was perceived to be, you know, a criminal and
Yeah.
is murdered. So, you know, I, I really called for us to have a conversation amongst the black staff at the city of Brampton to just talk about how that impacted them. Because I know what happened in many different work environments is that people are asking the black staff, oh, how are you feeling? You know what I mean? And, and it may not be a person that they feel comfortable with expressing how they truly feel about seeing what they saw. And, and then also it, it, we needed to have the conversation because we are people that get on with it. We don't always process the emotional reaction to seeing racial injustice. We are used to saying, yeah, what a surprise. You know, let's keep it moving. And that's not healthy. So we had a good discussion at the city of Brampton and it became apparent to me that we have work to do. And, you know, after conversations with mayor and a wonderful person named Francis Bradshaw that works in the mayor's office, we, we said, now's the time, we need to put together the unit. And you have, we'll have Gwen Chapman, who is the one leading that unit, to really start putting us in the direction of communicating with the community to understand anti-black racism and how it's impacting the city. Cause I always said, and I even said it in council, how we treat the staff in our city is a reflection of how we treat the community. And we need to have a hard look at that. Because like I said, ninety-five percent of black families own their own homes in the city. We're taxpayers, you know, and it happened for many years. So to not have that representation, like it, it, it blows my mind sometimes to know that we, 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 we are, we've come so far, but we've got so much further to go. But anyway, you know, onwards, right? And so the unit has been great, but we also made the bold step because all members of council felt that equity and inclusion is important at the city. So we added to the budget and included in our budget, the funding for an equity office at the city of Brampton. That's major. And an equity office is going to look at, you know, lean in and into the conver, conversation to see, we need to normalize equity. Because when you normalize equity, that means you're challenging the systems that have made it difficult for people of color, disability, women to have the same outcome as the, as white people or able people and, and male, right?
Yeah.
White males. You need to see the normalization of that equity. So if you have a system that only shows that this percentage of people, even though you have a large group of people coming in, but a small percentage of that marginalized community are actually getting through, your system is not equitable.
Yeah.
Right? So we are looking at, with this equity office, every policy, everything that goes through our system, HR is going to have an equity lens.
Nice.
And that is really important for the city of Brampton. We know we need to change. And with that investment, we're going to start seeing some changes. So over this year, I'm really looking forward to, you know, seeing this come to fruition and encouraging the conversation and, and looking at how we can break down, you know, anti-black racism, sexism, you know, racism on its, in its whole entirety. And make sure the city of Brampton is creating the same opportunities for people of other, all backgrounds.
Yeah.
All community.
Oh, thank, thank you, Charmaine. I, I agree. The city can then model that for, 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 for the city, for other organizations, for the rest of us as well, to, to also join in, into that movement. And I love that you've expressed it. Absolutely. It's anti-black racism. But it's also equity amongst genders and sexual orientation and all of the, those that have been marginalized or been my, felt to be minorities, you know? Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. Yeah.
Yeah. I, I'm not a person, I don't care who you are. You should have the same equal opportunity and outcome as anybody else. And if that's not happening, we need to take a hard look and understand why, you know? We, we are a great city and, and we have good people, potential and strength and growth. And, and this is an area that's going to amplify that when we work on it and get it right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No. And one of the things I'm hearing from you too, is, is the, the role of leadership within that. And so as, as we all look around, our decision-making tables, our boards, our, our, our senior leadership, are, are we raising up in an equitable way of everyone? The diversity around those tables. And it's time to take a really hard look at that. And we can all do that in the different places that we lead and operate. And yeah, absolutely.
I agree.
Oh, so, okay, as we move forward in this work together, and it is work, it's hard work. It's intense work. It's important work. What, what role do you think the churches can play or, or communities of faith can play? Because I think we, we need to lead the way around justice. Because as we, you and I talked last time, Jesus is the one who has come to bring justice. And we as followers want to participate in that. And so, well, yeah, any sense of what faith communities could be doing to help bring this, lead this, move this?
You know, I've never encountered a faith community that promoted hate. You know what I mean? I've never encountered a religion of faith that said, you know, you are better than the other person and everybody else is to be treated as less than. It's not in the fabric of, of, of faith and, and following a, a life of, you know, servitude, right? Like we are, we do, that's who we are. We are to serve and love. I keep saying that last commandment, love thy neighbor as I have loved you. If we can, I know everybody's like, Charmaine, that, that is great, but like, come on, who's ever, are we ever really going to accomplish that? And I'm like, we will one day. We will.
Give it a try.
Give it a try.
Yeah, yeah.
You know what I mean?
Absolutely.
Really give it a try. Really see the next, the next person that you're frustrated, the next person that cuts you off, and if they're a person of color, go to a place of, they're having a bad day. Not a place of, they are bad drivers because they don't know how to drive. Those people don't know how to drive. You know, go to a place of, you know, I've, I've done that before. I've cut somebody off before. Oh, and that's, you know, like, love. Just, I just react with a place of love. And the church and faith, we, we, because I, I'm a woman of God. I think we can set, we are the example makers, you know, leading the way in, in, and being, you know, leading by example is the way, the role, you know? And it's, and it's in everything that you do at the church, Jamie, everything you do. You know, a friend of mine said, you know, I walked in to North Bramley United Church and it felt like a recreational center. It was great. You know, I automatically felt included. And I'm like, you see that your space and, and the teachings and everything you do in the community is leading by example. And that's how we are going to dismantle the legacy beliefs that, you know, of racism and of, of exclusion and of oppression, you know? Just following God's word and, and following the teachings that he left us. They're examples of how to live.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. Oh, no, for sure. Yeah, I love it. Oh, thanks, Charmaine. And, and what, maybe that's a great way for, for us to end, to love our neighbor. Friends, just, just take that and that's, that's, it's so true. And, and a lot will resolve when we, when we do that, when we understand, when we stop to think about the other person, to care for them, to connect with people, to listen, right?
Listen, that's right.
Yep.
When you love, you have patience.
Yeah. Yeah. We think about our words because they matter. Like all these things, we, we come back to that, what we said earlier, that, that we all are human. God has made us all, and we've all been made beautiful. And God has this great dream for us to get along and to live together in harmony and peace. And, and, and it's, it's possible. It's possible. But I think, I think it's right. You're right, Charmaine. It starts with just love your neighbor. Just love your neighbor.
And what a great. Isn't it seem so simple?
I know it does. It does. It is. You know what? And, and what a great theme for us in February, Black, Black History Month. We celebrate that, but all of that is part of loving your neighbor. And let's just kind of raise the bar on that, friends. And good things will come of it for sure. And that's what this podcast is all about, to bring good things, to bring good news, but also challenge us to live in a way that we are part of bringing that good news and that better life that God intends for all of us. And Charmaine, oh man, I'm just, just love you and appreciate you so much. And thank you for your leadership and for the, the beautiful role that you play also in your home. It was great to hear about your family too, and how things are going there. And so God bless you and, yeah, and your home and just our city council. Many of us, many of us pray for council regularly, for you and, and Mayor Patrick Brown. And so thank you for your leadership. And together, we'll just keep doing our very, very best to bring this change that will bring racial justice and reconciliation. And let's just end by saying it starts with loving your neighbor, loving your neighbor.
Your neighbor. Amen. Thank you.
Well, thanks, Charmaine. Thanks, everybody, for joining us on the Good News Podcast. Hope you can join us again and God bless you and hope you have a great day. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Bye, everyone.
Thank you for listening to the Good News Podcast with Jamie Holton. If you liked what you heard today, please share it with a friend who may benefit from today's conversation. And if you want to hear more, be sure to subscribe to this show and turn on your notifications so you never miss an episode. Thanks again. We hope you enjoyed today's discussion and we'll see you next time.